The study session of March twenty fifth is called to order. Donna, do you do a roll call, please?
Thank you. Councilmember Blush.
Sure.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Saff.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. All right, tonight's study session, Police Chief Chris Costad has is going to share the Police Department annual report with us. It's been a long day for me, so. Some time today.
Thank you, just Mayor, like the Mayor and Councilmembers. We appreciate the time, uh, tonight to go over the twenty twenty four annual report, which we're going to do this on an yearly basis. And I'd like to thank, um, our writer's book, Sheriff, Sheriff Childers, she's the one that basically gets all this together for me. Takes a lot of man hours. I had to put her in the pressure cooker this year until I wanted it in the first quarter. So, you know, to give it a reasonable time and then Captain Patton is responsible for our professional standards report. So, thank them both for, for the hard work that they, uh, did to get these together for us. Like to start with our annual budget of last year was four point one million dollars. Uh, we ended up coming in about, last before our whole budget report was in mid-January, came in about two hundred fifty thousand hundred budget for last year. That's primarily due to us being understaffed by, uh, two officers at the time, so that's, uh, we realized this significantly stayed savings, uh, when we were under staff. Um, but also I'd like to point out that, um, our overtime cuts for last year were significant as well as compared to twenty twenty three. Um, twenty twenty four, we came in with a budget on overtime for forty six thousand dollars. Uh, in twenty twenty three, we're actually twenty eight thousand dollars over budget. So, that's due to hope that's due to a few programs that would be elicited, uh, with our corporals, uh, that all the interview men, uh, they seem, um, at some of our overtime, that sergeants crew, corporals, that engage another supervisor, that people, like, also, we have some best criminal activity intensive generate overtime hours. So, um, yeah, that really will, so, uh, there we go. Uh, last year, uh, or yeah, last year, we had twelve thousand five hundred eighty calls for service. Previous year was, uh, thirteen thousand seven twelve, so not a significant, uh, difference there. And one, one calls for service, which is included for those calls to service, um, the four hundred sixty five, uh, versus the three hundred and one, uh, twenty three. Uh, last year, we had seven people, the chief officers and two employees. Um, three of those officers were, uh, brand new officers, um, coming, coming out of the academy, not from the road. So, we were substantially low on our numbers. Uh, and, uh, low recognition for two of our employees who reached their five years of service, Sergeant Diaz and our, uh, and Stan, uh, Gano. A little bit of five years of service last year. Uh, this is, uh, some.
Can you, can, really quick, can you, I'm confused about the calls for service and nine one calls.
Sure.
Service, what's?
The, the, the calls for service are the total calls for service and four hundred and sixty five of those calls are going to be a nine one one. Does that make sense?
So, they might come through non-emergency or other calls.
Correct. Yes. Yes. Thanks. Uh, just a few, um, a few, uh, stats here for control, again, in our calls for service. Uh, last year, you'll notice that we had six hundred and forty five arrests versus five hundred and twenty arrests in twenty twenty three. And then also the citations, uh, issued last year was significantly more, six hundred and thirty seven versus three hundred and sixty four in twenty twenty three. Um, you'll tend to notice trends like that, especially when you start getting, uh, a younger, uh, new police officers, um, in the job. They want to go out there and just, you know, pay contacts and make arrests and do their job. They're happy to do it. They love to do it. That's why you see those striking numbers we have at, and, uh, we had two vets in, uh, in a field training program last year and, you know, you can just see stats skyrocket, you know, because they're just out there constantly working, you know, it's a working job. Uh, calls per day is pretty, uh, it's pretty on par. We did, we did about thirty four calls per day. Let's split between two shifts, which will be, you know, two, two at minimum, maybe three, three, um, officers per shift. So, of course, you have about six. I split that those, uh, you know, at minimum four. Um, that, the previous year was thirty six and, uh, the big year was thirty three the year before that and thirty six. We're pretty, we're pretty standard on, on those numbers. Those are pretty close as well. One really, um, one thousand six hundred and sixty nine with the fourth written, uh, versus one thousand three and one thousand six hundred and fifty four. So, we're, we're just kind of right on par. Numbers are staying very close to each other. Uh, here's, here's more statistics, uh, reference, uh, burglaries and trespasses. Uh, burglaries was, uh, they increased a little bit since, uh, last year. Everything else is pretty much staying right on par. Uh, our detectives division, um, they, they handle all the, um, danger crimes that follow up. So, when officers are out on patrol, they come across a situation where they can't, they don't have the time or the ability to finish that case there and say, need further investigation. Obviously, write a report up or that on toward detectives division and they will take over those investigations. Um, they, last year, they had a blood arson, they, you know, twelve burglaries. Uh, burglaries were up a little bit last year. Um, one notable thing is we had no homicides last year. Um, we, we had, had that happen in quite a few, so that's probably one reason why it was still on overtime last year. So, I really start to, uh, that hit us hard in the pocket, but when it comes to, like, I was, uh, there's so much time involved with those. Resources from our agency alone, that really, that really puts our, kind of, like, risk, I think that's one reason why we were able to save, uh, so much overtime this year. Detective Gevel is, uh, part of Pike Act, which is an internet child, it's against children team and it's, uh, the lead agency on that, Seattle PD. Um, he's been investigating with, uh, that team for over a year now, on special training, special equipment, um, programs he gets to use. Um, so they did an investigation last March and where there was, uh, uh, subject to his possible possession, uh, there's listed, uh, uh, pictures involving minors and he got involved with all the warrants. He contacted, uh, Seattle PD. They came out, brought their team out, they subpoenaed the warrants and they will make arrests, seize all the evidence and, uh, they kind of, kind of deal with the, uh, that's, it was a great case. It really, it really showed how this whole, like, that team works together because they, they kind of all agencies on the side of the state. It's, it's great them now, people can involve in these types of types of investigations and, you know, it's, so, very great that we get free training from them. That's, that's a great, it's a great part of it, and we just started that last year. SWAT team, we have, uh, last year, we only had one officer on the SWAT team, a Sergeant Brand, he's a sniper on the SWAT team. Um, they responded to, I think they have four, four callouts last year. Um, SWAT teams compromise the, the Shell Police Department, Mason County, um, Sheriff's Office, uh, SWAT, so, as well. Um, so that they, again, they have to do, you know, twenty, twenty hours of, uh, training per year. And I think, uh, Sergeant Brand actually sometimes does whatever, this is SWAT or, or sniper as well. So, that's additional training on top of this, um, SWAT training. So, but this year, we did have another officer, um, into the SWAT team. So, we're glad to be part of that team. It's a viable experience for officers who get involved in, uh, just, uh, experience. Our two K nines, Lex and Valor, um, paid, you know, two hundred hours of training last year, over thirty five appointments. Um, we worked closely with the Mason County Sheriff's Department with our K nine program. This year, Lex and Valor will be retiring. So, we have replacement dogs that will work in the front house. Sergeant Diaz will be getting the replacement dog this year. Sergeant Downs will be not moving forward into the K nine program. It will be, um, sergeant sergeants, so they'll have them, uh, in full position this year. Detective Jimmy Elbel will be running, uh, detectives, uh, currently training, will be a K nine officer. Hoping to get the new dogs up. Um, this year, the training with them, we're just kind of waiting for the know-it-hits from the training products to actually get them to us. That is in the mix.
And Chief, um, so our K nine program is fully supported by donations from, from our community. So, that is not, that is not, that's not.
The only thing, the only thing you cover for is, is actual officers paid, but, um, purchase of the K nine, uh, veterinary bills, food, um, any extra equipment they need, panels, whatever, it all comes from their K nine population.
Belgian Malinois, or are they?
What's that?
Are they Belgian Malinois, or are they, uh, German Shepherd?
These are German Shepherds. I'm, I'm, I'm not that great with dogs, so, that's, I'm so sorry, but I believe that.
The Malinois are typical, yes.
Yes.
They're pretty disease-free, I believe, so, yes, yeah.
Um, uh, some exceptional, exceptional things that happened this year. There, there's lots of things happening throughout the year. We get emails all the time for different officers doing great things out to build and serve in their community. Uh, last November, Officer Walens, who's apparently the officer with us responding to an unconscious female. Um, he went and, uh, administered her CPR. Um, she was in and out of it. She eventually got resuscitated and transported to the hospital, which is fine. We followed up, picked up prior department, then, uh, a personnel level on scene and they, they didn't say that Officer Walens, um, break it after this, this, uh, may have been surviving. So, um, we had a, we had a conversation a few weeks ago during one of our leadership meetings, um, about Officer Walens's actions. And he's been approved for a life-saving award, and we bring that forward to, um, hopefully soon. I feel more dexter than I remember him from, you know, so, which he asked more, and, okay, it's safe to word, uh, it's, uh, responsible for that. Uh, another one is June twenty twenty four. Uh, these ones are, these ones are sloppy heart, missing child. I, I remember this one because I had one of those when I was lost. As soon as you hear, you know, missing one, two-year-old child, you know, your heart just drops. You go there. This one was out, um, um, at the turn of the fifteen or sixteen street, I don't know. I remember, you remember, right?
People.
People, thank you. Yes, it was out there and, you know, within five minutes, five, five to ten minutes, we got ten officers out there. Uh, trying to establish, you know, what happened. First thing we always do when we go to, when we go to these calls is we search the house, is that, you know, five times out of ten, it's going to be in the house, hiding, planning, sleeping. And this is all, it, it took a little while. I started searching neighbors and so, uh, neighbors' residences and so we, some of the other officers standing out to their, uh, into the community, but the kid, the child was located within residence. So, it's always, it's always a bit sigh of relief when, yeah, hey, got a child, he's good, you know, so that was, you know, we got, we got a lot of, um, like, that, well, we were on scene, we were so grateful that it showed up in numbers and we were really, it was all very, very, this. Another one we have is Officer Higgins. He's just, you know, he's just very, very grateful to the community. I'm always out there talking with people. Uh, just developing those relationships and, uh, he came across some children that wanted to play some basketball, but he couldn't do it because of weather. But then he, he came back another day and brought a football and ended up playing, took a lot. So, it was just, his mother was very appreciative of, of his extra effort towards her children. Um, so, she, she let us know that, which is very appreciated. It's just little things like that. We get, we get tons of these stories on here, so it's great.
She posted on social media, too, that was pretty.
Oh, did she?
Yeah, I remember when that happened, yeah.
She was actually here in a council meeting, uh, she's, wow.
Uh, she's very, it's, uh, so we hired, uh, last year, we had three, um, officers in the police academy.
Um, Officer Green was the last one to graduate. Um, then, then, here, you have, uh, Officer Houston and Officer Walens, they both graduated last year from that, uh, police academy as well. Officer Houston and Walens have completed their MTO process, they're sole, out on their own. And they, they're, and these officers are out there and just doing what they love to do and the numbers speak for themselves. Um, also, with emotions, last year, we promoted three officers to the corporal's position. The first two were Officer Portillo and Officer Tolan. Um, they were patrol officers. And one of the reasons why we happened to, uh, get an extra level of supervision within our ranks is because, um, like I said previously, with the overtime budget, when, uh, when a sergeant would take time off or vacation, you'd have to replace that sergeant with another supervisor and that sergeant's rate pays, you know, if they're more in a corporate, it would be so. You can get more flexibility out of our corporals, create them, uh, state, uh, having them do their shifts in the middle of the day, like twelve to twelve. And then we get back them up if we need them to cover a mission or we move the board and have a cover relationship with the sergeant response. And that was, that's one, uh, way we were able to save a little bit of overtime, uh, this year. And it also gives the opportunity to become first-line supervisor and run that position. So, they help, uh, succeed in replacing, you know, the recent positions that have, so. Detective Gevel, you might remember, I just, we just had him in here a couple of months ago. He was promoted to corporal, he's, he's in the detectives division, or more mainly in the detectives division. I'm currently meeting up the, the personnel in the detectives division right now, so I'll have two supervisors and one just, uh, uh, kind of old detective that'll help us not only cover, you know, when, um, we have a major crime. Um, we can get really, some really quick, I mean, in these investigations, when we got a lot of information and only got two detectives and, you know, we're, we're lacking a lot of the help, um, it, it's really hard to keep up with the war. So, I added another layer, um, supervision in there. So, Sergeant Downs will be the sergeant and detectives, um, Dr. Better, Detective Keno, and we, Corporal, we end up. Officer Ford will be committed shortly into a line of detective. And what's nice about that is only, only ones allowed to go on vacation are because, and that way I always have two to respond with same, and that not, they will have, so, supervisor there, supervisor. And you may, and you remember, of course, Officer Gevel was the, the officer here for twenty twenty four. He's just, um, he's a go-getter. He's a hard worker. He makes them tired. Just watch him. He just goes out. He does magnificent work. He's really coming in tune with his position. He's been in, uh, the detectives position for a year now. He has over a decade with the law enforcement experience, and that's really, uh, propelled through, through this, uh, process. Through the, then there's a learning, this, this, the position there. He's just doing, he's doing a great job and, and everyone recognizes um, that the officers come in and talk to him and, and ask him his advice. So, he, and they are the ones who, uh, maybe, I just made a thought of this station. You know, it's just, it's like one, and I was, it was, there, I was told you. And, uh, we did quite a few things for community outreach, uh, last year, twenty four citizens academy. Uh, maybe that was there quite a bit. Um, it's a great program. Everyone got to, you know, get a little bit of different taste of, uh, you know, different agencies, hands-on, you know, with certain things, um, like the third word of K nines and our policies, procedures. Um, so, um, all in all, great kind of random thing to try and give you a biggest picture. And, you know, so, hopefully we're going to do that again this year. We're, we're starting to look at that as a, a dual effort, the best in, um, Mason County. We also had National Night Out on, on, just twenty sixth. We did that on, uh, South Basin, South Basin Fire, not Acadia. So, I was out there and, um, four or five of my officers were out there and it was just a good time. Um, Sergeant Diaz did a K nine demonstration, the fire personnel did a, you know, they cuddled in the car. They looked like, you know, the candle with their touch game or something, showing how they did that. And, and there was a relay race and, you know, food and everything. So, it was, it was a great time for everyone to come out and just, uh, be with us and meet new people and have a good time. And as always, uh, we always do shop with the cop. Um, we're shop with the hero, as we, we call it now, because we invite just about anyone who wants to come. Um, essentially, Mason Fire comes out, Mason County comes out, Ocean State Patrol comes out, uh, Spox and Trigway stand out. So, um, it's great. We, we hosted, I think, twenty eight kids last year. Um, and for this year also, or this last year, Mason County also hosted some kids. I think they must have run fifteen or so. So, we hosted, um, probably the most good kids in conjunction with each other. So, it was, it was a, it was a great, uh, event, um, one of the best things I could do all year. Storytime at the, I recently did, oh, no, not recently, back in last summer, I did a storytime at the library. Um, some kids there, um, just ran a couple of books and come out. Some officers came out, they were all their vehicles out there and with them crawl around, let them crawl around, you know, and see all their equipment. Um, Captain Patton and Sheriff Burman did an active threat training, much like we had, uh, Eastern Union City Center, did that last May. That was just, uh, uh, just for the community that whoever wanted to show up. And a lot of grants and donations this year received over, for last year, excuse me, over a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars in, uh, grants or donations last year. Um, some names all about me. We got twenty thousand four hundred from the Washington, all of that professional authority. And that went to half of our, uh, flock cameras, um, CCU, you know, surely this year about twenty, over twenty thousand for our flock cameras. And then they came back and gave us another sixty five thousand, uh, um, a little bit later in the year. Uh, SBI, Sierra Pacific Annuities, gave us one thousand seven hundred and seven dollars. That was for our wrap. Um, the wrap equipment right here, you can see where that is. And that's, that's basically, that's, uh, for combatant people who are having difficulty um, containing or transporting, you know, the old school style is, you know, kind of mine air lanes and, you know, huddle time. Um, when the problem with that is, putting in the car, they, it was just, you know, adhesing, physiognation, sorry. Um, and so that's, that's the condition for us. We don't want them to get hurt. So, this, this, um, piece of equipment actually kind of locks them down, kind of a, a sitting area with their hands to their sides. And then kind of, they're almost like in a battery, we just lift them up, you know, bring the seats and everything, so keeps them in an upright position where there's no danger of them, um, you know, so that's what they contribute to. Um, CJTC, uh, gave us forty one thousand dollars. That was for our re-accrediting in twenty twenty three. Um, that was the first time they offered this program. Any, any, um, agency that re-accredited in, uh, twenty twenty three was able to apply to this. Um, and we got, so they gave it to, you know, were able to put that towards some decent weapons. And the last one is from, uh, the Department of Justice. It's our, uh, our ballistic vest. Um, actually, there's another two, uh, ballistic vest, um. Um, forget the name, the, the term, but anyways, it's for ballistic vests for, for the officers. It lasts for two years. They gave us forty three thou, or forty three hundred dollars. It's not enough to last this two years, but it definitely helps out as it's a vest. Um, have to be replaced every five years and, um, they're running right now about twelve hundred bucks or so on. So, we had a couple of bodies that really kind of rise that up. So, that's through Department of Justice. And the last one, um, was, uh, a K nine money honor for Valor, um, nowadays, uh, all that, that's, yeah, for the best. And that's, you know, yeah, I'll say it five times as well. I'm going to skip the professional standards part right now because I'm going to address that, um, in the next sort of award. Um, our records division, uh, they're, they're pretty much, uh, pretty standard on all their, consistent, I mean, on all their numbers that they produce from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty three. Uh, big ones are the public disclosure requests that, um, can break a lot of work on them. Especially when they're redacting, um, certain pieces of, uh, reports or, or especially the video, and it takes a while to, uh, watch some things out of the video that we've all released. And, oh, yeah, and our volunteer is, we sent in Hernandez. She volunteered for about the last, I think it was, uh, it's about mid summer until about the end of the year or so. And she volunteered for two, forty two hours, especially in the division. She was a, a student at a local college. And so, she was just, uh, working on her law enforcement, um, certification. And so, she, um, decided, uh, when, uh, she was retired, she was very talented. Uh, real quickly, there's our offenses from twenty four to twenty three to twenty two. Um, our numbers are down, you know, especially with, you know, our, our murders slash homicides, you know, we didn't have any last two-year-old manslaughterers. Our, um, our numbers are, are, have been increasing for the last, you know, so, um, that's been, this is the whole of, you know, the, uh, group pay crimes against persons, two hundred and twelve versus two eighty four, two sixty four, previous years. And the rest of that, for those two hundred and twelve crimes, we have arrested forty two more than, uh, I'm sorry. Strike that. And let's see here, against property, arson, burglary, and all the way down. Again, we're seeing lower numbers than we are in twenty three and twenty two. And if anyone has any questions, I have questions beginning about any numbers you're seeing or anything, feel free to interrupt me, I was. Here's our, our group of offenses. Those are, those are your, going to be your lower level, uh, offenses. Those ones are about, say, maybe a little bit more, no, nothing very significant other than, uh, the DUI increase. Um, which, um, is attributed to, again, officers are out there, they're pulling hours over all night. They're just, they're out there doing their job. There is someone who costs, who costs, who lives. And that's the end of this report. I'm going to switch over to new questions. Uh, do you want? There it is. Okay. Sorry, I'm on a T guy. Okay, this is our twenty twenty four professional standards report. Captain Patton put this here, of course. Uh, we've been doing these now since about two thousand and eighteen, when we first started accredited. It is, uh, is this something that we have to do for accreditation? And it's great to know where we stand, um, um, when it comes to our professional standards. This tells us about our complaints, our internal violations, pursuits, collisions. Use of force and vice place, vice pay, these, we see. Um, for our in, in complaints or internal affairs, this year, we only had four, and those were just our general, uh, complaints with the, the, uh, the public. They, they didn't reach to the level where we needed to do an internal affairs investigation. Out of those four, uh, two of them, uh, were not sustained. One was sustained and then one was incomplete due to, uh, the complaint intended to operate with the investigation or recompense. So, that just kind of sits there and lets them wonder what we think on it. So, um, but as I said, we didn't, um, we did not have any internal investigations for the last year. And here you can see what, what the complaints were about, uh, places, the company find officer, it was Rue, a county that, uh, uh, a county that other investigation, group conduct, and then the ones that take one was, uh, systems unhappy about the health of the investigation. So, glad to say that we did have a major, uh, issue last year. The only thing we haven't, uh, done the year before, the year before, I think, we all actually, that's, that's, we generally resist, and that's the question here. Vice place policing, every year, we, uh, we do training on vice, uh, based policing. Uh, this year, we're pretty in line with how members have been heading up, um, over the past few years. There's one exception when it comes to, uh, citation, criminal and traffic citations issued to Hispanics. We did see an increase in that this year. Um, last year, and we had a total of six last year and this year we're at about a hundred and forty eight. So, we're still looking at that and we're doing. a bit to kind of see how these numbers were derived, did they come from calls, you know, calls being placed and we respond to them? Or did they come from some initiated activities? So we're going to process that, we're going to check up on that mid-year and kind of see where that, that lies. Although statistically for, for demographics for Sheldon, it's, it's pretty on board for, for percentage, it's thirty-two point two versus thirty. So it, it is close in demographics, but the numbers did increase this year, so we are, we are looking at that. We're trying to ascertain if this is just in a normal way or if there's a reason to be. Uh, employee collisions, we only had two employee collisions this year, one were our fault, so thank God, no injuries, just property damage. Pursuits, as you can see, over the last three years, twenty twenty-two, we went on to two and twenty twenty-three, one and one. This year, this last year, we had five, that's, that's due to legislative changes in the pursuit laws now, so we've been pursued for prior to that, we would have to have probable cause to pursue, now we don't have to have reasonable suspicion again, so now that opens up opportunities for us to continue pursuits a little longer. But I am glad to see that our officers, even though they may be justified in continuing their pursuits, they are discontinuing. That shows a very good level of readiness and maturity assessing the situation at hand, saying, hey, this isn't worth it, the, you know, the violation isn't worth it, it's too busy, it's too dangerous, it's getting too fast and they're calling off it, I appreciate that. They are, they're making those mature decisions, including that when necessary. One, two, two of them ended by a collision and one was next to it. All of our pursuits this year were within one. And the main reasons for pursuits here, one was an assault, one was reckless driving. And I can tell you right now, and those reckless drivings, they were probably DUI, but we don't, we don't know if they're DUI until we get a spot and we conduct our investigation. So three of them that we discontinued, we'll call it a reckless because they're driving reckless, but we can't say for sure they're DUI. You know, we could have continued with the pursuit as a DUI, we chose not. Use of force, we had twenty-one uses of force over last year. This is a little bit of an uptick of the year before, but it's still, it lands us with, with the calls we're, we're going to per year, which is twelve thousand five hundred and eighty last year, that's still, we're still landing in the point one percent of calls per service that involved us of course. And one thing I remember, just because there's twenty-one uses of course, that doesn't mean there's twenty-one calls with use of force. There could be, you know, eighteen calls, but a couple have multiple suspects involved, so because each one would be use of force, you know, it's involved in the same instance, so. So that, that can, that can be a determining factor too, but I actually think that was this year, because we had a couple of officers go out and there's four uses of course and one hits it because there's four suspects. So that kind of can fluctuate your numbers a little bit. And you see primarily we're hitting uses of course, kind of involved with males who are intoxicated or on drugs, that's, that's where most of our involvement is. And let me see here, just to wrap it up, you know, we, we have a continuing recommendation for officers regarding these particular capital bills throughout the year, you know, with the use of force, daily force, policy refreshers, defensive tactics, lesson, lesson in general, weapons training, which actually we're doing yesterday and today, and the escalation training, so. We're always trying to make us the best, most accountable, you know, transparentest that we can be in, so we continue to train this, you know, every year, it's just.
Questions, comments?
Just to comment, first of all, the majority, not even the majority, the vast majority of the feedback I get is about the professionalism and the humanness of our officers, so thank you for creating that culture within the department. And secondly, this is the only town I've lived in or ever just walked around where I'm waving at the police force and they wave back happily instead of me worrying about them you turning on me, so. Just, just letting you know that you guys are doing a great job and you men and women are doing a great job and I feel safe in this community, so.
I appreciate that and I notice that too, even when I'm going down the road and I'm looking at, you know, whatever's going on in the city, I get lots of waves and it's, it's just, it's great to have those interactions and be, you know, one with everybody and, you know, just talking, conversing.
Uh, thank you, thank your, thank your officers, thanks Sarah and Dan for putting a great presentation together and and also I hear a lot of good things about the police force. And I definitely haven't heard any complaints, so, and trust me, if someone wants to complain, they, they find me in Safeway or Walmart. When I'm shopping and I want to get in and out of there, but, but yeah, thank you and your officers and great report.
Yeah.
Keep looking, hearing more stats, thank you.
All right, you are off the hook. All right, next, Finance Director Mike Edens has some budget information for us. How the funds stuff. I would see sarcastic.
All right. I think, I think before Mike gets started, I know we talked about this in council, at least once or a couple of times. Leading into our twenty twenty-six budget formation, we once circled back by council's budget information as we did, and that is on the hit list of adopting the twenty twenty-five budget that we accounted for any fund balance to use to balance the general fund. Obviously that's not sustainable long-term, so we have some decisions to make how we move forward with twenty-six, twenty-seven and beyond. So Mike and his team have done a lot of work to project what that budget looks like for the next three years. And this informs the council better on what our kind of service levels are now, what the associated expenditures are with those service levels, what revenue is to offset those, those service levels. So we can go into that council retreat on May fifth to really talk about, talk about service levels and kind of have the budget numbers kind of behind us. We want to hear priorities of the council, inform staff, so we can go back to work and develop a budget that meets your service level priorities. So that's the intent tonight, to further inform you of this budget forecast and if there's any part that's not before you, if you have any questions at any time. You know, feel free, that's, that's why we're here, hope to, hope to better inform you and the public. We talked a little bit to staff this morning about this as well and we continue to talk about staff because this is a, we're approaching, this is a team effort. It's, it's all of us within the city of Sheldon, the whole area community, we come forward with a couple of ideas, um, when we enter into that retreat, engage our society as well to learn about this sort of stuff, so.
Okay, brother Mike. Okay, we, when we, you all know when we adopted the twenty twenty-five budget, we agreed we were using some ending fund balance and so this is trying to go after this early like Mike mentioned, so that, you know, we're, we're not waiting until the last minute and having to make more severe cuts than might be necessary to pack those earlier, so. These brief Q and A know on this quite a bit, I, I don't know. Well, I guess I shouldn't say that because I live in the finance world, I don't know that you can look at this too often though, I live in it every day, you all don't. So to review just a little bit where our ending fund balance has been. As we mentioned with the monthly report, we added this line through historical data on our ending fund balance to show that we have a reserved portion that's per council policy, policy sixteen percent of prior year expenditure. Twenty percent of prior year expenditures in the general fund, water, sewer and storm fund. And that is really the base level that we use for cash flow purposes. We take your authorization to use it in case of an emergency with one of the funds or, or some sort of natural disaster, it could be an economic downturn. But that's where we have below that, you're at an insurance range line that appears there. What's above that is unreserved, in other words, that's what we use and are using in twenty twenty-five to balance the budget. And that's that unsustainable portion. We kept doing that, it's eventually going to get down to that reserve line. So, you know, when I was listening to Chief Costad talk about the lease budget, you know, some of that is attributed to our unreserved portion, the under spending, the vacancy of officer, under spending overtime. The donations, all those things led to some of this, that's not all of it by any means, but that's a portion of it. So as you hear that, it just reminded me a little bit of how that happened, so. It was due to open positions, it was due to revenue coming in, some of it one-time revenue. Frankly, that came in higher, as I've mentioned, we budget in a revenue in a pretty conservative manner, so that we know we're going to achieve that. If conditions stay the same, that's where we want target to be. And so that's why that sometimes happens, so that's that ending fund balance in the general fund, the reserve for policy. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about revenue.
Really quick, so historically, if we weren't in this five-year forecast downturn in revenue and expenses, obviously, we would use that money for one-time projects to put a roof on the civic center to do some roadwork, but at this point, we can't because we need to save it to get it to buy the next couple of years until we figure out we grow or figure out more, more revenue sources.
It's the same operation, right, so it's, we're using more of it for ongoing expenses than what we prefer to use, it'd be great to reinvest that in one-time projects, like you said, whether it's facility projects, street projects or community enhancements in some way, yes, but we're, my problem says I'm not going to apologize for the fund balance.
For having to.
Yeah, absolutely right, I think it's the diligence of our staff, decisions the council made, there are problems to discipline, certainly.
And we do have some money set aside in our general resources capital fund, so. We do have some for those sorts of things, like a waste replacement, to make the capital from bone and a known building. But as a reminder, we're doing quite a bit of facilities maintenance with this year, we're using some V funds and some other capital funds. Trying to think what all those are and I think I have listed out any of your later, but some of them are replacing H D A Cs at some of our own buildings, not this building, but.
Museum.
Museum, library deck, that's happening, that's in cooperation with the general library district, but also brands, so. So taking a look at our revenue forecast, this is something that, again, shows, I think, our conservative approach to budgeting. So our property tax budget, so these are all revenue sources that comprise the general fund. So property tax doesn't change a whole lot. If, quite honestly, as we grow down the road, we would look for that to increase some. But predicting kind of right now where we're at, we can assume that this is where it will be, so. It's a pretty straightforward line to analyze and predict on, I will say this projection is predicated on the economy staying fairly much like it is fairly stable. I think we're fortunate to some extent that if the economy recesses, it should crater any one area, it's obviously going to affect consumer spending, should recession come about, those sorts of things, but I think by and large, we don't have that, those more luxury sort of purchases that would cause sales and lose tax to go. So leading us into sales tax, yes, last year was a pretty strong year, we were over budget. Predicting this year to be a little bit more in line, I kept it flat in the projection, again, I'd rather be over than under. Our, just anecdotally, our first two months of twenty twenty-five were lower than the first two months of twenty twenty-four. Will that continue? I don't know, but I think it bears being a little bit more cautious on that.
Well, it's a little concerning because I was telling Mark today, I mean, that's November, December.
Right.
Figures, so received, so that's Christmas time.
And you know, our, as I've said, our sales tax a month of the general fund, it's, you know, it's pretty consistent, so when it's lower, you're talking ten to twenty thousand dollars, but if that continues across the year, obviously that's something to kind of watch. Our, our receipts range in those high months around three hundred thousand dollars. It varies, so we'll see. March, which will come in to us from the Department of Revenue next Monday, it'll last in a month, April are typically lower months anyway, because they're the receipts for sales in January, but we can still have that compare us. The utility taxes, I, so based on our, our city provided utilities and non-city provided utilities stay fairly consistent, but are relational to the rates, so as those Michael, so do the taxes on those. D and O tax, in twenty twenty-three, the council at that time voted to increase the, you know, tax effective twenty twenty-four. So that's the increase you see in revenue there. It didn't increase it a lot for twenty twenty-five and as I've explained with, just kind of wait and see, I'm hoping I can increase that for twenty twenty-six and then it should level out. D and O tax would be volatile to a processed economy also, obviously, because businesses are bringing in less and that's going to be impacted. But I'm hopeful, as you can see, our twenty twenty-four revenue came in just over one point four million. Weren't real aggressive, I wasn't real aggressive with increasing it because I wanted more data. If it does come in higher, which I can tell you, the annual filings of which we have put in the city of Sheldon, in the day of January for the prior year, it was pretty solid, so we'll see what the rest of the year brings and when we prepare the budget that something nice, we'll add a little bit of any increase there, the rest of the categories stay fairly suspect. I reduced our transfers in and that's that mention I made there, I think the four hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars is from library endowment fund and the maintenance projects from the real funds. That could happen next year as staff determines there are some projects and there's some remaining budget, I know it's one and two, that's real estate and size tax. Trying to remind you if I don't call out it happened, because I know we use them a lot and it's, I, I want the public and everyone to know what we're talking about. This is completely transparent, so that's our revenue forecast, you'll notice it goes down a bit next year in forecast because of, we're pulling out that transfer in, but it stays pretty darn consistent, our revenue as you look at it, obviously twenty-three and twenty-four are the actuals, it just doesn't change a whole lot. Again, in twenty twenty-four, we got some one-time money in the form of permits, in the form of some grants and in the form of just going over budget in certain areas, utility taxes. So that's our revenue outlook. Then this forward to the next two years for planning, again, it's predictable, which is a nice thing. It doesn't change a whole lot, but that's revenue. I added a couple of informational slides here, so this is something that appears in the monthly report. It's just to show you and our public, we have a pretty darn balanced revenue pie. Which is nice when you're working in a, in a public agency, that's that effect, I think that if we do experience a downturn, it doesn't just hit linear. If we were completely reliant or largely on property tax, if you have a downturn there, it hits the hard. Here, we have a pretty balanced pie, that other category has our smaller sources. That's a good thing, I think it helps us plan and have some predictability, shows what percentage of this is, you know, our biggest places are property tax, sales tax. So that's our revenue picture. Let's take a look, let me drop this back a little bit, discuss a little more. So our expenditures, the expenditures for the general. There you go. So our expenditures, the expenditures for the general.
Human resources. Risk management. They're supported from the utility. Those offers. See, there's, it's broken up the best of our ability, um, to represent the entire.
I have pulled this before, but can you remind us what non-departmental is?
Non-departmental? Mike, Don, can you help with that? Because it's a, it's kind of a range, right?
It's just kind of what doesn't really fit directly into another funds, but like transfers, like if you transfer out to. This transfer out to the street fund as the, that's non-departmental, but it's not really, doesn't really fit into one of the departments that apply. And there is some transfers towards the bottom payment, uh.
Debt service.
Yeah, that would be debt service for the bottom, yeah, uh, and towards our pensions for our old, for fire pension and for the. It will, next, we, oh, yeah, uh. The payroll and the.
Or police pension basically. Yeah, last, 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 last one, I mean, we still, um. We start to find, uh, that minimal. On the bottom.
Yeah, bottom.
On the five state.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that. Sorry, I don't know what happened. So this just to kind of show you as we, I think. My thought was as we go into a discussion of level of service, so you can kind of see where. You know, based on all those budget lines now, what piece of the pie does all this represent? So I missed some of what he said, but does that help a little bit? You know, firing emergency services is the I L A, the interlocal agreement that we have with Central Mason Fire, so that's. Essentially the calculation based on our excess value within the city limits. By the by a thousand times the levy rate that they have, that's what we pay them, just as though if we're. Citizens and businesses paying that, and then the E M S levy that voters approve, also those. That we collect it and then pay it monthly out, which would be.
We should pay the same way if the city operation, fire service. Mercy then service, that would be paid from the general fund collection, right, and distributed to the services as the city would provide. So our payroll, our debt service on the, on the station, um, uh, equipment purchases, things like that.
So some of these, because they're so small, perhaps to less than a percent, like zero, very, you know, you. I'd more wanted you to kind of see the sense that this is how it's split up. Um, as we have go from this, which to me, if you're a numbers person. And like Excel, like we do in finance, that's great, but what's that really represent? This is just taking it then to show this is the pie and what each of those departments, if you will, mix up that. Pie of the general.
I think this is helpful.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Don, because you know.
Thank you.
All right, so that's our projection then to get us from twenty twenty five through um, twenty twenty seven. Just taking a look then, this is a breakdown to show, um. What our revenue budget is, our expenditures budget, and then our total here, one point one million. Where our expenses exceed revenue and we're using the unreserved part of that cash balance we started. Out of this presentation, right, so. I wanted to give you more of a picture though, what really do we expect? Because I said I, we're conservative, so if the revenue comes in completely, the whole budget. Which it could admit last year, but we understand expenditures, which. By law, we can't overspend your authority as council, so even if it got close to that, we'd have to come back to you in the form of a supplemental budget. And ask for your authority, so typically, we're, I'm banking on we're gonna understand. I don't know by how much, but we need to at least come in exactly at or below. So if we assume underspending, which I think is reasonable, we have. Some open positions, we have sometimes people who are on medical leave without pay, we just don't get everything accomplished. So let's say we only, only, we use nine hundred and forty three thousand of the annual budget instead of one point one million. This math down here at the bottom shows that. Out of that unreserved portion, then that leaves us with two point one million. Again, to illustrate that we can't keep just throwing all that forward. Oh, to pay for ongoing expenses where it's going to run out, our savings can't sustain that. So that's twenty five's picture of that. I took it forward to just show what twenty twenty six looks like. Again, the same kind of assumptions that, you know, we're gonna spend some of it down in twenty twenty five. If we were to just keep our foot on the gas. Keeping the general fund exactly like it is, we would use one and a half million of that. And now we're down to only about a half a million dollars left in that for twenty twenty seven. And that's my point that I was making earlier here in numbers, if we did that, we would. Have one point two million left uncovered in twenty twenty seven. A shock to that general fund to try and cut that much back out of such a, a small. Building, so that we have, we're doing a lot in the city when you think about all we do in that general fund from police to fire. To community development, to committing, finance, city management, all the things we're doing. It accomplishes a great deal, but. You can't do it all at the level we're doing it in a sustainable manner. I also calculated, because we've talked quite a bit about new development. Um, and we're certainly hopeful for that, and I know that's probable as you drive by the college and live up on the hill, there's um. First moving, things are happening, so that's great. So took a prediction here or a. Really a revenue possibility, if there are a hundred and fifty homes. New in the city limits by, and occupied, so they've sold and the people are moved in and happily living there. By June first of twenty twenty six, then that's revenue that we would see in twenty twenty seven. So property tax would be a hundred and twenty thousand one seventy three. Took an estimate on sales tax, this is a tough one because we just don't know how much each residence might. Shop and buy, but assuming that those hundred and fifty residents. Homes generate about a hundred and seven thousand dollars and then some utility tax gives us two hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars, so.
Still not much.
Not much, but if um, our community development director Jay Hill this morning spoke of, you know, the potential for. Fifteen hundred homes in the pipeline, well, so now you take this hundred and fifty, you know, down the road. It does help us and it hopefully then lends in that commercial. Element because now Shelton's getting to be a bigger city, but for now, we can't really bank on it to help us in twenty six and twenty seven. That's where we have to address this. But for the future, it's a great possibility, I mean, that it's really something that. Helps our city as far as finances.
I mean, even, even if the two bills in the House and Senate pass, at three percent, that's only sixty thousand dollars, right?
You're not enough of.
The head for you.
These property tax.
Correct, yeah, that's only sixty thousand bucks there, so. I mean, we need to look for revenue sources. I mean, forty five percent of this, uh, expenses is public safety. And I'm not willing to cut public safety, I mean, not gonna take away any officers from, from chief or, you know, so I. I mean, it's revenue sources, I mean.
Well, we need to, we need to be strategic, right, and there's, there's no, but there's little opportunity for immediate revenue. Immediate relief on revenue, right, we, we need, and we need to be strategic, we didn't talk about the T B D and before we have the sales tax after this, so. Um, I think we need, so the thought is, that's why we're coming to you now and we continue coming to you through that retreat and beyond. Is that we're pumping the brakes on this, we don't get that one way too, all of this to click, kind of what I call it, right? We're pumping the brakes, we're slowing the car down, so we don't hit that, we're slamming on the brakes, really affecting services. By into our community, if we reel that back a little bit, we find some savings, I, you know, look for some other revenue streams or opportunities there and balance those out. Um, appropriately, we can stretch this out a little further, we get to. More development, maybe there's other revenue sources that we can explore out there. We talked about annexation into the U G A, that's the potential to, in those things, it's a little bit of time. And we can't wait for those possibilities without planning beforehand with some, you know, with, with, you know, kind of some reductions and some. Some moderate work to be done to, to stem this, stem this, uh, this budget. Frankly, it's a concern, yeah.
By, by the May fifth, uh, retreat, can we get some information or some financial pressure, what it would look like if that fire department annexed the city and. We were no longer collecting and doing that, I mean, how much of a difference that would make for the future, I mean, just, I know that it may or may not be. In the next couple of years, but what will that do as in a five year forecast, if they, if they did, you know, one, we're not paying insurance on that building. You know, same with the, the library and the museum and, you know, dedicate those to those entities and. And then we, there's also insurance savings, the maintenance savings and.
Yeah.
And again, uh. Talk about that in the retreat, I guess, some of my views on maintenance issues in some of these buildings, but. Um, yeah, so it'd be nice to know that, and then, um, talk to the what ifs, you know, it's like the enterprise funds we just set up. Would that be a possibility of saving some funds there for twenty seven? You know, but.
Enterprise.
Rental funds that we just did, um, there'd be a chance of saving some money there, because that's like a half million bucks that we just got sitting there, right? So.
We haven't set aside for.
Yeah.
If we get to twenty twenty seven or maybe before that, that we can dedicate that to that debt service for, you know, the. Lease rates, to eliminate those lease rates, eliminate any burden purchase of vehicles, yeah, so we're not burdened. With that debt service, essentially that lease rate, it's not affecting other services that you're finding, yeah.
Because right now, those payments are going into that general fund budget.
Yeah.
So just so everybody.
Those payments aren't coming out of that five hundred thousand, right?
No, no.
They're just coming out of, out of operation revenue, and then that's just there just in case.
Right.
That's in that whole other fund.
Yeah.
Right, so if, so if the five hundred thousand dollars set aside is dedicated to that, it reduces, right, the expenditure line.
Yep.
Particularly with the police, we're, we're ordered by police cars, just, just did, um, so we eliminate that. That lease paid in overtime, and one gets that line out of next year.
Can you remind me again what the insurance rate increases were over the past three years?
Oh, and I can give you a dollar now. Twenty twenty two was, um, about in the three hundred thousand dollar range and it's up to, uh, over a million dollars now. Now, that's not all out of the general fund, that's citywide, but, um, approximately six hundred thousand.
That was one of the biggest hits, was that insurance hits?
Absolutely. I mean, our, our liability insurance and then, you know, employees are expensive. You know, that if the end of business is. But yes, cost doesn't go down for employing people or, ensuring our buildings and equipment.
But it made, an increase that is more than a hundred percent, a hundred twenty percent or so. Ability insurance over a couple of years period of time, you don't have the revenue to offset that, you're grabbing that out of existing base sources.
And our ad valour is only one percent every year, so we're, we're, we're. We're in a. So we're, 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 we're in a equitable situation.
That first year's jump in insurance happened once the budget was set. So we have just kind of paid a way out of it. Now unfortunately, revenue's been positive and understanding happened. So it didn't create a big cut situation. But that was the year we heard back and we scaled that. And I think it's safe to say, and you'll learn more of this on May fifth, the retreat, and you know, have heard it before. We're a pretty darling staff in this organization. So that has to be said, I think, also. So we talked about the general fund. Is that, before we move on to the street fund, I just want to make sure that you don't have any questions. If you need more information, but, you know, we want to make sure you have it so that going into May fifth, you feel solid on the numbers. Is that safe to say that you don't have a lot of questions about the revenue? It's solid in your mind? And I think it is, because, and then where are the expenses on? Because it's important, it's transparent to you and our public and our staff that there's nothing secretive or hidden in this. Happy to go into more detail wherever you need it, so please let us know.
And we know sometimes it costs, and we're weird as times, right? After seeing this, so this isn't, you know, this isn't kind of the final touch. It's, it's speak now or wherever the hole in your piece, right? I want you to be able to, you know, in our, in our briefings, discuss this a little more, have more interaction, ideas, um, questions, comments, so we can continue providing, if you need to further inform you and to educate you on what we're having.
We're kicking this off pretty early, you know? Normally we don't get into, well, we do, but with everyone until more like summer. But given this circumstance, it just, as Mark and I have talked, it's, it's important we engage in this sooner so that we can be well-planned and in your direction so that staff can go back and build a budget that represents your service level wishes. So the street fund, this is a fund that is separate. It funds the maintenance and operations of our streets in the city of Shelton. It's funded predominantly, largely, with a sales tax that is dedicated to the transportation benefit district. The citizens of Shelton, we'll talk more about this from, even that presentation. But even, that's the dedicated sales tax that is in there. So wanted to lay this out for everyone so you can see where our street fund is in twenty twenty-five. We have the revenue sources there. We have a pretty aggressive, um, plan for the year in capital projects and what's going on. But our budget, our revenue budget, the money coming in is two point two million. The expenses going out is two point four million. So again, not as much of a use of any fund balance as the general fund. But certainly, we're still in that position where it's to operate the streets, to keep them functioning as they are. And remember, we talked about this, it's all, we break up that budget from now, and I didn't bring my cheat sheet. So there, Brent's here, he can help me, but it's side blocks, it's streets, it's sweeping, it's snow and ice. It's all those things that are going to maintain our streets. The, um, things that are going to happen out of the capital projects this year, the chip seal project, the in-house paving, signage improvements, thermoplastic application, which I've learned is a crosswalk. Yeah, well, or better, sidewalk replacements, downtown street repairs. So all of those things, um, we're planning for the work on Olympic Highway North with the grant that was awarded to the city in the coming years. So all of those things are happening out of the street fund. I think I shared this with some of you, um, that what I will tell a fairly minor snow event that we had in February resulted in overtime that is charged to the street fund. And it wasn't by any, um, those of us that have all lived in this area, the city northwest. We know it can be a much more severe winter and that costs several thousand dollars just for that type of event. To make sure our citizens are, are, are safe driving along the street. So this is an important fund. Um, it has a reservation requirement of sixteen percent. There's an unreserved portion. We're using some of that in twenty twenty-five. Our streets still, it is important that we have that TBD passed. You'll notice out here, I do a projection just out for next year, with the TBD continuing and without it. Though without it, the reason there's about a quarter of a million dollars there is it expires in April of twenty twenty-six. So we would have some months, even if for some reason it wasn't, which certainly we hope it isn't, because our, you can tell we can't do what, do what we're doing without that TBD. So that's about our street revenue and operations in the street line. That's, I don't have a fancy, the end slide. That hurts, but I hope that's been, um, just giving you more information. That's what the intent here is for you. Like I said, Mark and Alex, they have a staff meeting for later today so that staff can watch the YouTube before it gets there. And also for our public to just know that we're planning. I think it's important that the citizens know we're taking this seriously and making sure that we're not just going forward with blinders on, but making sure that we have a plan of that.
Want some questions for Mike?
Thank you very much.
Thank you and your, oh, go ahead.
So we do, and it looks like kind of annually, we do about a four hundred thousand dollar transfer um, from the general fund to the street fund because we need that money to get by. I know we've talked about it in the past, it's really important that we get the TBD passed at the point two percent, twenty, uh, point two percent to maintain the current level of funding that we have. But we do have the option to put forward at point three percent. And I know we had talked about doing that as a separate, as a separate option moving forward and we couldn't get it until twenty twenty-six anyway. But if we were to do that, we could save up, free up some portion of roughly three hundred and ten thousand dollars if voters approved it. I don't think we could really pitch it as just like, hey, free up this money for the general fund where we can do whatever we want. But some portion of that could probably come through as an option for us to kind of move forward and free up a little bit of money to cut down that deficit if that sort of makes sense. And I was looking, we also have the option to pass, uh, the twenty dollars on taps. We talked about it last week and I went back to double check the RCWs. It does look like we can do that councilmatically, um, while we have the sales tax. It is not much money, so I'm not saying it should. It could be something like a hundred thousand dollars a year. We assume there's five thousand vehicles registered within the city limits, but that does exist. And it's unfortunately, the option is available to us if we can't pass the DVD sales tax this next year. Um, especially since really that's the option. We, we can see pretty clearly, we don't have roads otherwise. Unfortunately, the state is looking for fuel tax options to solve their own problems. But neither the House nor the Senate decided to put, um, the, they're, they're proposing that say a fuel tax should go up with inflation. And they specifically did an end around on us to not include the inflation for the city and county portions. So instead, they'll get to take the inflation that could have gone to the city and county and use it for their own purposes, which is a little frustrating. And all of the other taxing options that they've used to look at the, the decline in, in our gas tax and move forward as we're moving towards electric vehicles, they are continuing to push out vocals. So those funds are just kind of disappearing. And the TBD is what we have for ten years until we don't have that either. So a little nervous about our roads, but it's really important that we get that passed.
And I've got a little more information. I think I've got some, some more information on the, on the license stats too, we can go through and talk about that. There's, there's, there's twenty-four month increments.
Yeah.
To be recently, so I've got that in a slide. We can talk about, we've talked about the timing, the balance issue as well, if you guys are ready. Council, right, along to that.
Do you have any questions for Mike? All right.
Okay. I can say. So this will look really familiar, um, from back in November twenty twenty-four. I just made some edits to, um, further, um, describe the, uh, the, uh, now that I'm second guessing myself, I put the tab in the motion. So, uh, I'll look at that. But I, I do have some information about, um, the, the balance measure in time for that. So I'll, I'll run through this fairly quickly, if you don't mind, since you've seen it before, seen it multiple times. Pretty long, and skip to the meat, I'm willing to.
Skip to the meat, so I think we've seen this.
I think, you know, the, um, uh, it's outs in twenty sixteen, uh, two tenths of a percent of ten years expires. We stopped collecting or stopped receiving collections in April of twenty twenty-six, right? So actually, yeah, in February. We got, one thing I wanted to point out is we got a great webpage that demonstrates uh, how the TBD funds have been used in the past. And what's being used, uh, this year as well. So I think it's, it's good to point that out and certainly provide that information as well. Um, there's state condition information. Um, some of the projects that have been completed, obviously, uh, as Mike mentioned, going to the budget, um, with, uh, it also supports maintenance of our, of our streets. So pedestrian paths, sweeping, uh, auto repair. We utilize it to offset, uh, grants as well. And so we'll see many of the grants received, if not all of them, require matching, um, some sort. Uh, so our staff are gonna make up receiving grants and leveraging the local funds for, um, for these, uh, for these projects. You'll see that the TIB or Ontario Program is over three million dollars in, um, to get that downtown project. And right now, we're aiming on the, uh, the Coway Horn project and that's about a four million dollar project. Listen to me, that's, uh, TBD funds already allocated to that.
And having matching funds in the bank help us get those grants. Right?
Certainly, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um, so the reason why this is on the agenda tonight is we had some discussion amongst council about, um, moving the affordable housing sales tax to a ballot measure for twenty twenty-five as well. So I think that really triggers the discussion about when the TBD would make it on the ballot. I can look back in our previous, um, study session, but there is, there is majority, at least, that felt, um, fairly confident to place, um, this measure on the ballot in twenty twenty-five at the, at the existing two tenths of a percent, uh, sales tax uh, measure. Um, but as we talked about before, the housing sales tax potentially putting that on the ballot. Um, you know, there was some concern if they ran together on the ballot or, um, one ran before the other. So, um, I put this kind of side by side together. It's an August ballot measure, November ballot measure, what our timelines are. And on August, the August fifth ballot measure, it's really creeping up fairly quickly. That means we have to have a resolution passed and tune the calendar, to the county auditor by May second. So that gives, we essentially have two meetings to get through the briefing and the action. Uh, two regularly scheduled meetings in April to get through the briefing and action to get that, uh, the unbox approved by the council. Uh, to the auditor by May second, the election date is August fifth. Uh, there's a lot more to do in the, for the community. What the TBD does for our, how it funds and programs and funds. Uh, August twenty-sixth, when, is when the election be certified, um, we would notify you our that have the certification for collection. We, um, starting after the expiration in February of six. Um, so if you're considering the affordable housing sales tax ballot, um, that, I think, by my recommendation, that would have a separate on your name, the, the transportation benefit district. It also gives you alternative name for the transportation benefit district to potentially be run in February, if it does not pass. That's, that's a longer timeline, we're talking July fifteenth, um, that has to be approved to the others on the slide on August fifth. November fifth, the election being certified, April twenty-fifth, it goes to, uh, you know, our seventy days, minimum seventy days before collection, they all want to start a collection in January, April and July, right?
Yeah.
So if you don't do it before that timeframe, uh, before July one, seventy days before July one, it would be eleven, it's sorry, I will. From the student, uh, the, uh, license status, which is grounds. Um, but as council member Gilmore mentioned, I looked at the city of Alsvo. And that's, they passed the twenty dollar, um, license debt fee back in twenty twenty-two. And I have a population right now of about like six. And it raised, um, that twenty dollars, it raised just that ninety thousand dollars in participation. So, I mean, forty-five hundred cars, the population of one in six. I don't, hard, hard to really determine what our, what our, um, how many cars we have registered in the city of Shelton. Um, but councilmatically, you're correct, a twenty dollar license debt fee could be a doubt that it needs to be in place for twenty-four months before it can be raised to forty dollars, uh, councilmatically. And then it can be raised to fifty dollars after another twenty-four months. And by statute, be, um, raised up to a hundred dollars, uh, for that case. So those leave, that's the other funding option, um, associated outside of the sales tax. Uh, as, again, as we discussed back in the November study session, um, statutory three tenths of a percent is, is allowed statutory. So at this point, um, if you need any more information, I've got this, this slide deck from the affordable housing sales tax measure as well. I talked about in some of that, some of the programs that could, that could fund or we could certainly focus on.
If we have questions for TBD, any questions for TBD? Are we okay with having to bring it back for an August ballot?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, that, so we, we're queuing that up for April one. Yep. For the, for the briefing, uh, we've been working on a draft resolution just in case. So I've been working with, um, city attorney on that draft resolution. You'll see, you'll probably see a red line version, uh, later on the fifteenth, because we've had some, some edits to make. But, uh, we certainly used the information group before, include some information, what the, what the sales tax supports, right? What, what the revenue supports within that. Within that resolution, it wasn't in the original resolution.
Yeah, like I've always said, it, I mean, it's, it's the best way and the fairest way to have a roads worked on. Because all of the people who live out of the county that come to Walmart and Safeway and Brimley, they're all, they're all contributing to our roads. Not just the, the people who live in the city limits. So it's, it's the fairest way to collect. Now, really quick, are, do we want to go for the two tenths or do we want to go for the three tenths before?
Well enough alone. Two tenths, let's not, let's not watch that one, let's stick with that.
I think you're asking too much, you're gonna get less.
Who does?
Who does?
We're definitely good stewards, that money, we've used that money for good projects and we can show that we use that.
Yeah, we'll, um, we'll get to, we'll get together with staff once, once, if the resolution's passed by council on the fifteenth, uh, we'll work on putting together, uh, information and we'll put together our plan. Uh, see if we can, we can promote any ballot measure, we'll provide the information, like I said, our city's website does a great job. Explain the interactive map, you can zoom in, it's not just about paving, chip seal projects. See, we'll get what street is, is the color and what color at what year. And we'll look back to a key and it'll actually tell you per year when, when that works. And, uh, we'll have our paving, our twenty twenty-five paving plan, uh, released fairly soon. We'll be on the west side of, uh, the valley north, some, some of those areas of Mountain View. We've got so much dating as we can do, and budget that's allowed. So we're limited what we can do internally for internal projects, internal dating projects, so it's a percent of our, of our total, um, total street budget, so.
I mean, and it's possible that, you know, that. I mean, and it's possible that, you know, that we may be cutting back on that general fund transfer for roads in our retreat, that could be one of our options for saving money. So that's seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars becomes more important, um, because it's dedicated road fund. We don't have to worry about.
Um, you know, you need the information for, for, I mean, sales tax, I guess, that's my next question. Um, if, if I've got, it's like consensus of the TBD at this point. Um, is there, is there a discussion about the, at this point, to move forward with some planning for the affordable housing sales tax and that?
That would be for November, not for, not for August, correct?
My recommendation is, uh, together.
Yes.
I'd like to see it in November. I don't want to see them run against each other because the roads are definitely the priority here.
I agree with, uh, Councilmember Gilmore, I think we should run it in November.
Definitely focusing on the TBD tax right now is what they need to be worried about.
Agreed.
Talking about November though.
Well, I think we should have passed it councilmatically, but that's water under the bridge. Um, I think that we should, um, put it on the ballot, um, before the end of this year, and I think November, not wait till next year.
I'm okay with November option is, as well, lots of people, so.
So understand that the only consideration tonight is we want staff to work on a, a resolution and bring it back for the council, consider it a council meeting, correct?
Yeah, we got plenty of time for that one, though.
Yeah, we have some time, yeah, we certainly have some time, but it's, it's planned ahead.
Do we need to start talks on that before the August date to meet our deadlines? I'm or does that need to come to a council meeting?
Yes, it, it, so we need to pass the resolution before the August date. Because that's when it has to get to, um, perfect, the county, uh, correct? Yeah. Sorry, I remember off the top of my head. Yeah, so it has to be filed on the 5th or by August 5th with the auditor of the November ballot. So it, it bums up against, um, the election day, uh, for potential TBD, but you didn't, I believe you can hold something within a feasible amount of time as well. They have to have that resolution in, into the auditor's offices. We haven't said that on the second, it was, you know, two seconds to have.
I'm not sure you had consensus to work on that yet. So you suggested, you said.
Um, you, you know, it is a vote of the people, so I'm, I'm okay with it going for November.
If the people want it, I'll let them vote on it.
Okay, well, send George.
I'm always open to let people vote on something. It's not a priority right now, TBD is what I'm focusing.
No, I would, I would probably suggest that, I know you're gonna work on this, I would suggest that the TBD doesn't pass in August that week. We would pull that and win the TBD in November by itself, but that was, we got a long time to worry about that.
Yeah, I'm not so sure we can do that with the, with the timeframe. Because, because the last data file is on election day for the November ballot, it's.
February. We do a special, special election for, for that TBD, yeah.
Correct, yeah, you know, then you can decide on the, on whether the affordable housing sales tax measure stays in November.
The TPDs are extremely important.
We're a bit, we're a bit at the mercy of.
I, I believe they're both important, really the TBD is the most, is really important.
That's why we're not increasing it to point three percent, but we want them to stand alone and just make sure that it's not a tax increase, it's a sustainable project on, need for our roads, and our road index is going downhill, so we need to actually get that passed and not worry about, um, rolling the dice and making, and finding out at, um, which way we lose, so. Um, yeah, I think, I think it's prudent for us to go at point two percent and run it first and run it alone.
And it's replaced. Right, it's already there.
It's already there, it's not an increase.
Adding to it.
Yeah, it's a renewable, right? What the, what the, um, resolution, excuse me, states.
Did we want to hear anything about the, about the, uh, affordable housing? At all, what it could be spent for, he did a presentation for, do?
Let's, let's queue that up, I'm sure for another time.
Okay.
We can talk about that a little more specifically, because, um, if we are talking about ballot measure, we want to be able to convey what the council's intent is for the spending. You know, there's lots of opportunities within that legislation, but I think it's really important to, to convey how the council would spend, so it's our priorities anyway. Um, so I think that's probably a broader conversation that I prepared for tonight, uh, so we can bring that to you. And it could be months in that. Again, we find that it's a intent from the council, so, uh, again, we can convey that message to the public prior to then making a decision of voting.
Good with that.
Right, so that, that'd be it from you, Mark?
That's it.
All right. Does the council have any other discussion?
I just wanted to say one thing, um, this is an affordable housing fund, it's not a homelessness fund. So the, uh, journal got it a little bit incorrect about, um, putting on its headline, it's a homelessness issue. It's about affordable housing at all levels, and, and also an infrastructure project could be, how we spend it could be on, uh, things of hooking up water and hooking up, uh, services to these potential housing units. So it's not about homelessness, it's about housing, keeping people in their house and making housing affordable. Housing in general, not homelessness, and I think the, the journal really did the, the city a disservice by, by, uh, putting it front page and how they, how they presented it. So I just wanted to go on record saying that.
Other new items? I just want to mention, I didn't bring the impression with me, but I had a board health meeting and just be diligent that measles is poking its head around again, um, in, in the area, it's got similar, uh, symptoms to flu, um, so it's, it's kind of, it's kind of bad in Seattle, I think we had one here. Um, it's huge over in the south. So it's, be, be careful at that, um, science for that, especially with kids in school. Um, and also we had an emergency meeting, um, that the Happy Garden was closed by the Health Department, um, a couple of months, or about a month ago. Several, um, violations, multiple inspected violations, uh, they appealed that decision today. And, uh, consensus was that they need to take a service, a force of some kind of management, of course, in food service, I think. I don't even want to have one, um, and then, um, bring their stuff to code. They were prepping food in a shed, can't do that. Bring the, step back inside, put a call for reinspection, and then maybe we'll come back to the board and we'll look at it again. But at this point, point in time, they have been, they are closed. And, uh, the health partners do that, they, they don't do that very often. This is the first, and the first appeal that they've ever had in Mason County that anybody can remember. And so it was, it's pretty serious, uh, violations, you know. So, but hopefully they can get some stuff together, take some courses and, and, uh, reconfigure, reconfigure their, the way that they're prepping their food and, uh, they can up, back up again. I'll bring some more information about the measles, uh, next meeting. Right. There's no other items for discussion, though we had a great, uh, active shooter training today given by.
Officer Blaylock, active threat training for our staff. Here, it's always important that we're diligent in training our staff in situations that are, may arise, so, uh, yeah, really think our, these departments staying active and informing, testing, educating us on any of these interest scenarios, and there's always something that comes out of these that, um, that is residual because it makes you think quite a bit. So start thinking about security measures that we can put in place for our staff and, you know, PDE courts being separated down here and having certain security measures and not having the same security measures upstairs. And then we can make sure that, uh, that our staff, uh, generally be safe, they have, they have all the measures that are appropriate for them to, now, be safe.
We're thinking about that today, do our doors, shut, we pull the fire alarm.
Yes.
By magnet. There's an option right there, if there's a problem here in the port or, you know, on the police station, we can do that and lock the doors upstairs automatically. I was thinking about that after the training today.
Yeah, that's the same thing.
Okay, all right, is there any other new items for discussion? The study session is adjourned at seven forty P.